Well, second.
Yes, I know Mexican.
Was it?
He had a black four runner. Jay Jay.
Is there somebody that you welcome to a welfare check on the animals?
I think it's one of the other locals was having that I'm sure. I don't know if he was gonna check on the dog or whatever. But I seen someone having up there.
Pretty tight man up there, I think. Are there other people up there? Not a lot, but the few that are up there are pretty. I'm not sure if Lisa's got a real park where she normally does, because there are a couple cars that pulled up with me that aren't sitting staff employees that were working there.
No, boy.
Yeah.
In fact, your timing is interesting on this because I thank Interstate Parking for patrolling this because we've had so many people wrapping folks I mentioned that take staff parking space.
Totally agree.
I just did that today.
Yeah. Maybe they need to do a little drive by right now. John May.
Oh, hey Scott.
Hey Scott. So we pass the time. We call code, he's out.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
Did you just turn your volume off with him?
And she said if you call her, she'll give you the map, show you where the map is.
So Scott, I was just mentioning that Jimmy's on a horrific crawl of the Oregon Canyon. And if he makes it all, it'll be like.
Well, I feel it.
I'm gonna use the. Two years.
They're usually found the way. Is it a thick line normally in this?
Jonathan, we good?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it is six oh three and I would like to welcome everybody to the July eleventh, twenty twenty two. Idaho Springs City Work Session. And we have two agenda items for the work session. And I'd like to start off with the Young Ranch Quarry Project update.
Do you have?
It may I, I I'll just give a brief introduction if I may. Sorry, couldn't, I wasn't able to attend in person today, I apologize. But thank you for attending the work session and just a brief update. The city of Idaho Springs had reviewed the original or what was an earlier proposal, maybe I should say, of the Young Ranch Resource Quarry back last summer in August, September. Uh, the city did provide some, uh, some comments, some questions uh, in regards to the, the proposed development. And over the last almost a year or a little less, uh, the city has been monitoring the progress of, uh, the quarry through the permitting process that the state uh, works through. And at the end here, we, the, the development has changed somewhat in response to not, not just cities' comments, but also comments from, uh, you know, other neighboring properties or people within the, within the area. And so we did want to invite, uh, you know, Mr. Young and Mr. Cunningham here is also here with the state uh, to provide us with an update and a presentation. I do understand that, um, the state has approved the, uh, the application, however, the permit hasn't been cut just yet, that, but that's in the process. Uh, so with that, Mr. Young, I, uh, please feel free to take it away.
Okay, and should I turn my, should I unmute?
No, because I can hear you, sir.
Okay. Great, so you share your screen and let's see your presentation then. Okay. And I want to leave time for Michael to also chime in as, as he would like. So Michael, please feel free to just indicate where, where the state would like to provide additional information. Um, sorry. Share screen, okay. Shut up. Button middle bottom of your screen. Yeah. Do I see that? Share screen. Okay. So Young Ranch Resource Quarry. First of all, I'd like to just thank you guys for taking the time to let me come in and give you an update on what we're proposing. I met with, gosh, we met with Black Hawk, Central City, Idaho Springs last summer, uh, Clear Creek County, quite a few concerned citizen groups. And like Good Creek, Clear Creek County open space. So we, we tried to reach out and really communicate what we're doing to as many groups as possible. Uh, in the beginning, through the D R M S process, we had of about forty, I think it was forty, people that objected to the project. What I did is I went around and I spoke to each and every one of them. And it was actually a great process, so it took a long time. Lots of time spent in people's living rooms and onsite and it was a good process though, and what we learned from that process is, um, a, a lot of it has been incorporated into our plan. So some of the things are like, um, jake breaks, for instance, that was one that came up quite a few times. Clear Creek County already has ordinance for jake breaks. Unfortunately, it's not always adhered to. So just briefly on that subject, we've devised a way that we think is efficient to work with Clear Creek County Police Department, Gilton County, Central City. And, uh, when someone has given a citation for using their jake brakes incorrectly, that citation is then delivered to us. Or if there's a citizen that records it to the, a license plate number, we feel that we have jurisdiction to have on the books, when, when we have a new customer vehicle coming to the plant, they have to take a site specific safety and training. And part of that is that, uh, they sign an agreement that says, look, if you don't follow these rules, one of which is this jake break rule, that you, on your first violation of it, you get kicked out of the quarry for a month. It's the VIN number of the vehicle and it's the operator, so if you're a big company, you can't just switch operators. What, what we're trying to do is incentivize people to pay attention to the rules that we have, jake breaks being one of them. Um, so with that in mind, we have other rules as well, such as they have to completely circle the vehicle, make sure that all the sand, any loose gravel is off the tailgate, kind of a, a safety inspection of their vehicle before they get, go down the road. They also have some, uh, speed limit criteria as well, depending on weather. Uh, because there, that stretch, that initial stretch of Central City Parkway is steep in places. So we want to make sure that they adhere to all of these different rules from a safety standpoint, both on and off site. So, uh, you know, people told us, well, you have no jurisdiction if you're, if a truck leaves your quarry, you don't have any jurisdiction, we don't, we don't have any jurisdiction. But, but we do have the ability to let that person back in the quarry. So if they don't follow the rules, we have jurisdiction over who we let back in. So inherently, and I've seen this process work on other quarries. There's one in particular in the Warren Park Valley that we looked at where, uh, they were having the same problem. Well, there's just not enough law enforcement to catch everybody. All of a sudden, if their livelihood, if they're, uh, you know, gonna get kicked out for a month, it'd be more meaningful than a two hundred dollar ticket. Two hundred dollar ticket, you know, the, the use of jake brakes is really a financial decision for operators of heavy, uh, haul trucks. They either use their jake brakes and not have to use their brakes as much. And also from a timing perspective, they can go a little faster and then use their jake brakes. Most jake brake incidences, uh, complaints regard unmuffler jake brakes. So that's another thing, you're, if you're gonna come onsite, your jake brake has to be muffled. I don't want to spend too much time on that, but it's just an example of something that we heard in the community. We also heard about light pollution. So our proposal, we're, we're proposing that we adhere to the dark skies uh, initiative. And that dark skies initiative is something that has been put forth by, um, you know, a lot of different groups to, to kind of hone in on the new LED type lights that can be just overwhelming. Um, making sure that you size the light appropriately, that you have a downlit, that you're not creating, uh, light pollution that just takes away from rural areas. Uh, so that's another area. Um, one of the biggest areas that we focused on is wildlife mitigation. Uh, you know, my dad and mom moved to Colorado in fifty five. My dad first came to Idaho Springs in forty seven. So he remembers, you know, he, he stepped foot onto our ranch in the sixties. He ended up starting to purchase the ranch in sixty eight. He can remember pre, pre sixty eight, when before I seventy went through, all of our elk that are, were on the ranch, the historic elk herd came from Mount Evans. When I seventy was put through, there were no accommodations for wildlife, or very limited accommodations for wildlife. So from nineteen sixty eight until nineteen eighty seven, we had zero elk. In nineteen eighty seven, we had a few start showing up. Over time, the James Peak herd infiltrated in, now we have a healthy herd that stays there this year, year round of, you know, forty to sixty. And when I say our local herd, it means that they come there for calving and they come there for the breeding season. In between, our ranch is a little postage stamp in terms of their habitat. So they'll go to as far as Winter Park, as far as Golden. But while they're on our ranch, year after year, they're having their babies there and they're there for the breeding season. So we consider those kind of our local elk. Now you'll have other elk that come in and out throughout the year, but those are what we consider local elk. So we focused, when, when, when we started the mine permit process, we were advised that we should do a study on the wildlife impacts. Uh, we identified the mine permit area, which is about four hundred and sixty nine acres. And we were going to commission a, a wildlife impact report for that. I sat down with my dad, he's ninety one now, he was eighty, or ninety, eighty nine then. Uh, and he said, well, we own six and a half miles of Parkway. When the Parkway was put through, for whatever reason, there were again, no combinations for wildlife. Granted, it's not I seventy, it's much lighter traffic. But as it grows, as this, as the area just gets more traffic, that'll just increasingly become more of an issue. So his suggestion to me was, let's take this opportunity to study the whole six and a half miles that we have some control over. And our only control over it is that we are a boarder to it. So we did that and we asked the wildlife biologists to come up with recommendations based on that entire six and a half miles. So their recommendations were pretty significant. I mean, it's a lot of wildlife fencing like you'll see along, um, C dot roads with off ramps so that the animals, if they are on the road, they can get back off. Uh, part of our project is realigning the Parkway. Um, Central City Parkway to take out some really steep sections and some areas that, that have, uh, huge fills that are not sustainable or are harder to sustain over time. So one of the recommendations was when that realignment takes place, put a, an overpass on for bighorn sheep. Um, the other recommendation was to take the, the southern section of this and create a wildlife corridor that is undisturbed during the life of the mine. So all things that we heard and we thought, those are great ideas. The wildlife corridor on the, on the east, on the southern end of the project is also important for a couple of other reasons. Um, you know, I love biking. I love trails and stuff like that. So we understand that the peaks to plains trail system is right there at Hidden Valley, so it's right below us. So by leaving that ridge, by leaving that wildlife corridor, we are able to, um, oh, or, okay, so if you look at this, the area that's outlined in pink here on both of the, both sides, it's about a hundred acres or so. That part of the project is undisturbed during the project's life. I don't know if you can see that really well. Um, but what it does is it allows us to realign the Parkway, but then on either side, we, we maintain this ridge line so that the view of the quarry area, as you're coming down a hill or as you're in, in, uh, Hidden Valley, uh, you're, you're seeing natural environment, you're seeing the wildlife corridor. Uh, so we felt that was important. When we started thinking about the mine design itself, we looked at a lot of mines all the way from Aurora Springs up to Fort Collins. And mines in general have been designed and constructed in certain ways that maximize the efficiencies of the product produced. And, you know, and sitting down with my dad again, he's like, look, there's three things that I require. He's like, you have to do justice to the land, you have to do justice to the wildlife, and you have to do justice to the local community. So when we took the first step of that, do justice to the land. We got with our mining engineers who, brilliant guys from the school mines. And we said, look, we want to do this in what we would consider a modern way. We want to take the, the way that it's been done for many, many years and change that in some ways. What we did is said, look, we want you to take the surrounding areas, figure out what the slopes are, what is natural, and blend those slopes in so that for the next generations, as reclamation happens, that reclamation is actual, actually functional for the benefit of both future generations and wildlife. Both aesthetically and, um, topographically. So we studied the surrounding areas and they determined that no area of our mine site should be over a two to one slope. We, we will have very sporadic for visual effects, some little cliff bands, but these are small cliff bands. It's actually more expensive to leave a small cliff band than just to find it out of there. But what we're doing is we're laying the slopes back to a two to one slope. We're going in there, we had our ecologist study what the natural vegetation would be for every one of those aspects. So anything on a northern slope gets retrieved, just like the Forest Service would after a fire or after, um, a logging operation. So we go in there with two lanes and we start at the very top and we move down. So that first top, you may have a, a thirty foot van that you go in there, you put your soil amendments in, you, and all of this is bonded to it, so our bond will be substantially more than a lot of mines, because we are bonding for both the placement of that material back to a natural slope, the augmentation of that, so that it can accept natural native vegetation, and then the actual planting of that native vegetation, which includes pine trees, bushes, native grasses, depending on the aspect. So as you can look around you, trees are on the northern side of slopes. If it's a northern facing slope, which is the majority of our reclamation, it goes back into a forest condition. So it's, it's also about creating the, the micro environments. So if you look at a reclaimed slope, to be able to have good tree growth and good plant growth in general, you need to create little micro environments. And the way that you do that is if you walk any of these hillsides around here, it's not just really fine material that's been seeded. It's material that has boulders, it has different sized, uh, you know, it's not like riprap where it's aesthetically not pleasing, but it's also not just a sandy loam. It's, it's material that if there's a boulder here, that boulder inherently creates a little bit of shade, the snowpack loads in there more. That's typically where you'll get your trees growing naturally. So what we've done is gone through and said, okay, how do we create those micro environments? How do we create the slopes that accept the type of revegetation that our expectation needs? Um, and when you think of the cost of that, it's a big number to go through there and do that kind of reclamation. But I guarantee you mines can afford it. We can afford it. We can afford to put that land back into a purposeful use in the future. And that purposeful use in the future, we are creating some flat areas. So we have sat down with, you know, both Gilton County, I've mentioned it to Clear Creek County, I've mentioned it to Central City, that we want something that's regionally beneficial to happen there, but we don't want housing. And you can either be for housing or against housing, we happen to think that that particular area isn't the right area for housing. So we don't want this to spur more housing in the area in the future. Um, and that's just a personal preference. Some people would, would like to have more housing. Here's a cross section of what I'm talking about in terms of revegetation. So when you look at this cross section, you will see that the slope, being a two to one slope, is for mountain terrain is fairly gentle. It's consistent with the slopes that are in that area naturally. So by creating these benches, backfilling those benches, starting at the top, if you have a thirty foot van that you revegetate and you do it properly, then ten years later, you look up there and it has ten years of vegetation on that first swath. So you're going down and then by the time you get to the bottom, you can have fifty years of vegetation, go ahead.
What, what are you, what are you gonna backfill it with, just the tailings from the mines or the?
You have to augment it, so you have to.
You'll have to bring in stuff.
Well, not necessarily bring in stuff. Um, what you have to do is you, you put your, like basically crusher fine, which you see mines do. You put your crusher fines down in there, but then you top it with these micro environment boulders, rocks of different sizes. And then on top of that, you have to augment that soil. So what we're doing is we're taking, we're having ecologists go up there and they take nitrogen level, they take all the different kind of chemical stuff that that natural environment has today. And then we need to bring that soil back to that, so, to that level, so that it supports a nat- a natural, a natural environment. Um, and, and I think some of the, the important elements of that is that, you know, this, this is a multi-generational plan. These things are there for a long time. So from our standpoint, minimizing both the visual impact, minimizing the impact of wildlife, every time you put back a layer and you actually get it seeded and get it to the point where it's acceptable, then the D R M S steps in, we've already committed to this level of revegetation. Once that hits their standard and they say, okay, that can survive on its own, then we release the bond for that section. But they hold a bond so that if we were to just walk away, then they can go in there and they calculate that on a phase by phase basis. So if you look at our bond for the first phase, which is tiny, it's around three hundred thousand. When you get into these latter phases that are much broader, then what they do is they have a very sophisticated system that's actually starting to be implemented nationwide, just because it works. Where they go in there, they do their calculations, they account for inflation, they do all the things that you need to do to make sure that that land is brought back to what both my family has said that we want. Because who knows what my next generation's gonna be, they could be great, they could be not so great, I'm hoping they're gonna be great. Right, we cross our fingers. But we have other systems in place with the D R M S to just assure us that that's going to be what happens. So uh, we also have some fill sections, the same thing happens in the fill section. When you put fill in, which is basically material that wasn't sellable, so you're gonna sell everything that you can down the road. What isn't sellable, you put in your fill. And that fill needs to also be handled in the same way, so you start to fill at the bottom and you make layers, and as you make layers, you plant those layers the same way. You put the augmentation in there for the soils, you do the, um, you know, the two blade plants, all of that, so that you're basically mining from the top, doing some fill in different areas and vegetation comes back together so that at the end of the day, when the project is done and future generations look to that, it's not obvious that a mine was even there. It's, it's something that, um, truly, in our opinion, brings the land back to what the state says is the requirement. The state says the requirement is to, uh, make a beneficial use, some beneficial use to your reclamation. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, Michael, but that's, that's my interpretation of it. They say beneficial use. What we're saying is that to bring this back to a beneficial use for wildlife or recreation for humans in general, for just visual aesthetics, then you need to do this work. Um, so just to give you a little history, the of, of my family as well. So just to give you a little history of of my family as well. My dad, it was it was my dad and mom moved to Golden in fifty five. My dad had been out here in forty seven. He had a hard rock job in Montezuma. He and his younger brother, so they knew the area. They moved here in fifty five after he got out of the service. And his dream was just to be able to own some land. So he worked at Coors, went to school, worked at Coors until nineteen sixty eight. There was a uranium boom, he was studying geology, then there was a uranium bust. So he's he's dropped out of that, went into real estate in sixty eight and just made a lot of investments in Arvada, in in the foothills and started putting money into the ranch. So this has been his life's dream to have a ranch, have a working ranch. It's now four thousand acres. He's ninety one and he's not short sighted. You know, when I sit down with my dad, I can learn a lot of great things because he's not thinking about tomorrow. Tomorrow may not even be there. He's thinking about what is his legacy? What is going to happen to this piece of property that he loves?
I I just want to apologize for interrupting you. This is important. But I worry about us giving you enough time.
Oh, sure.
Cause I've I've got about twenty five minutes because.
And I want to have time for questions.
Okay, and I wanted Mr. Cunningham to voice, you know, opinions. So I just.
I appreciate it.
I'm just cautioning you to time and I know we're probably gonna get into water quality and geological concerns and I just want to make sure you have enough time.
Okay, so let's turn it over to Michael for a little bit. Let's let him discuss it, what he would like to discuss, and then I can answer it. Oh, absolutely. I I am welcome to come back. I mean, I'm happy to come back whenever you guys would like an update. So I'll turn it over to Michael.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Michael Cunningham. I am a senior environmental protection specialist with the Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety. And I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to to be present here and and answer some questions this evening. I think Mr. Chipman and Mr. Young certainly gave a good overview of the process and where we're at right now. Just to add on to a few things, as Mr. Chipman indicated, the Mine Land Reclamation Board did approve this application at last month's board hearing. That permit has not been issued yet. Issuance occurs when the financial warranties get posted and accepted with the state. And as Mr. Young indicated, the required amount of the financial warranty for Phase One is three hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty one dollars. So the applicant has approximately one calendar year from the time of approval to post a performance and financial warranty, at which point we would issue that permit. I'd also note that in addition to the state permit, there's a whole host of other local, state and and federal approvals that are needed on this mine site. And so just because our permit will be issued, that doesn't mean that they can commence with mining. They're gonna need to have all of the other approvals in place. And and we have a commitment to to have copies of those submitted to us so we can include them in our file when they get to that point. You know, I I think, again, Mr. Young gave a really good overview there. I I just want to, you know, let 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 the city council know and 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 you know, when once this permit is issued, you know, certainly this is just the beginning of it for us. We intend on being out there and keeping tabs on this and closely following along the mining and the reclamation. A quarry of this size and scale would end up on what we call a high priority list for our construction material sites, which means that we're gonna have an increased inspection frequency out there. For the city council's information, on a regular mine site, our staff gets out there once every four years for routine monitoring inspections. We intend to be out at the Young Ranch Quarry once every two years for inspections. Of course, if there are citizen complaints or agency concerns, we would schedule inspections to go out there as issues arise. And additionally, over the life of a mine for something like this, there's gonna be revisions. It's inevitable, and a lot of these revisions will necessitate us coming out and doing additional inspections. So we intend on having a presence up there. We intend on monitoring this reclamation. You know, I think we have a very good plan that we approved at the end of the day. But really, we have to monitor that. We have to ensure that they're successful. And so along the way, if we find that any portion of that reclamation plan isn't working for whatever reason, whether, you know, let's say the seed mix that we've decided on just isn't as successful as we thought it would be, we're gonna have an opportunity very early on during reclamation to address that issue. We would work with the operator. We would go through a revision process and we would change whatever needed to be changed in the reclamation plan. You know, I think with that, I'm I'm happy to answer any questions that the city council may have about the application or what we do as a division, how you're gonna regulate the site.
Well, I think one of our biggest concerns as a city is any contamination to our watershed. We would hear about it from downstream users. And I think that I'm I'm assuming and I'm also a full confession, Mr. Young was good enough to meet with us several months ago. He met with Councilman Curtis and myself. And I I'm just saying probably one thing that is a future concern is will and will probably always be the the watershed.
Absolutely. I think everybody would acknowledge that water is really one of our most, if not the most precious resource we have out in the West. And, you know, having seen the development on the Front Range and the need for that water, coupled with the historic mining impacts from, you know, legacy mining prior to regulations, we understand and appreciate that. I I was an inspector directly in Clear Creek and Gilpin Counties for a number of years. I've got a lot of familiarity with the mines up there, the historic ones, well aware of the water treatment that occurs. You know, we routinely partner with the EPA and and assist with some of the superfund sites that are up there through our inactive mines program. So it's something that's absolutely at the forefront of our mind. You know, the the, without getting too much into the technical details of the application, and I guess I should say for for the council, I manage a very talented group of people, staff members at the division that are the ones that have done a lot of the legwork and the review on this application. So while I'm familiar with some of the details, certainly not all of them, but what I can tell you is that after we looked very closely at this site, we looked at the hydrology there, we we don't actually think that there's gonna be any impact to to water resources. And and there's a couple of reasons for that. You know, this is a hard rock quarry, which is different than some of most of the rest of our construction operations, which are typically in alluvial areas where absolutely we have exposure of groundwater when those mines start digging. And in those particular situations where you're going to expose groundwater or you've got any potential to impact that, we're gonna set up a monitoring plan to monitor for impacts to quality and quantity both. We are an implementing agency for the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment when it comes to regulating water quality. And so in looking at this site, we've we've got competent rock. Certainly, we've got water in the rock, but it typically exists in in fractures. So these these aren't generally true aquifers that we think of. You would have to drill down from that property very deep to be able to hit a water bearing zone. And if, you know, Mr. Young can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that water bearing zone would be somewhere on the order of three hundred feet below the bottom elevation of this proposed quarry. So based on that, you know, we we did not require a monitoring plan, but that doesn't mean that, again, you know, we're just gonna walk away and they, you know, we we figured it out and there's no need for that. What we'll be doing as we conduct our inspections is we'll be looking closely to see if any of the conditions that were discussed, predicted and put into this application have changed. And anytime along the way, if we say, okay, this was not what we anticipated or it's not what was predicted, we can we can change course and we can require groundwater quality monitoring and quantity monitoring as well because we we want to make sure that resource is protected. And I and I'd just add the other reason that we did not include that, we this site, while it is immediately adjacent to the mineral belt, the area that was heavily mined, where, you know, we know that anybody that's gonna mine in most most areas within the mineral belt in the Clear Creek area, they are going to be handling or mining through acid or toxic forming materials. And that would definitely put them into a different category. Based on the geology at this site, again, they're close to that area, but we we believe they're far enough outside where that's not a concern for us. But again, that is something we intend to monitor over the life of the mine.
I want to ask you, it's estimated that there's approximately two hundred miles of tunnel that are connecting or draining to the Argo water treatment plant between all of this legacy mining. And I I'm I'm just curious, I really don't know, how close is this quarry to some of these tunnels that are draining in to the Argo? Do we do we know?
It it's a good question. You know, I I don't know that I know the answer to that, but I what I can say is that, you know, in looking at this property and certainly taking a look at any historic mines that may have been there, you know, none were found. And so I I don't believe that any of the mining activities that are gonna occur here would ever intercept or impact any of those existing tunnels that feed into the Argo.
And I I would ask Mr. Young, do you know?
I do. I do. So if you, the the mineral belt through this area is very well mapped. The reason it's very well mapped is that back in the day, you did have really good geologists. You also had miners that knew what to look for. So those typically those tunnels were were following veins or just piling into an area that was known to have a lot of veins. Okay, because we're well over a mile past where the mineral belt is, we don't have any any mines that extend out in that direction. So and we have been impacted by the tunnels and by the, you know, the mining activity from back in the day. So we're we're keenly aware of that.
All right. Thank you. Michael, do you have any other concerns about any of the geological issues or or permitting or licensing that that you would like to share with us?
You know, I I don't. I I think, you know, as Mr. Chipman said at the outset of of this evening's meeting, we spent almost an entire year reviewing this. So this was not, and and just for the city council's information, we start with a ninety day review period on an application of this type. And we extend out that review timeframe as needed until, you know, the division staff is satisfied that all of these issues have been resolved to our satisfaction. So certainly was a long process. I think it was a very well vetted application. I think we made a very solid recommendation to our board to approve this. And so I think I think it's a good plan. Now, you know, you can have a great plan, you can have a perfect plan, but that requires that you actually follow it, you actually execute it. I I've got faith that Mr. Young is gonna follow the conditions of his permit. But that's also why we're here as a regulatory agency to ensure that he does stay in compliance. And if there are any issues, we we don't hesitate to take enforcement actions. We take it seriously. We're gonna be out there. We just want the council to know that we've got open lines of communication. Should there ever be any concerns or questions, we're we're always happy to talk to you.
Oh, well, thank you very much. And Mr. Young, I did not in any way mean to cut you short. I just had to ensure that we had enough time.
Absolutely.
Mr. Cunningham was actually quite a bit shorter than than I thought. But you were saying, so your dad started buying the ranch in nineteen sixty eight.
Yeah.
And he doesn't take his legacy lightly, doesn't want it to be, you know, some giant housing subdivision or some type of lighted area when the when the mine is done. And just if you would carry on from there.
So this mine is about four hundred and seventy acres. That's a little over ten percent of the ranch land. The ranch itself, big portions of it were potato farms back in the late eighteen hundreds, prior to the Argo Tunnel. When the Argo Tunnel went through, drained the water table considerably. They had to go from potato farming, which was very profitable back then. We have an eighteen seventy four article that shows they sold twenty thousand dollars worth of potatoes, which is like a fortune back then. So then they went to dairy. My dad picked it up from a widow of a miner who was very successful in Leadville, and she just didn't like mining. She said that she spent her best years in these mining towns and didn't like mining. So my dad was like, well, I don't have a business with mining, so it's a good fit. She wouldn't release the mineral rights to him for another ten fifteen years. She just wanted to know that 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 he, she 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 told him, I don't want this to be mine during my lifetime. And this is on us, this is on about a hundred and sixty acres, that first initial piece that he bought. And then over the years, he's just added to it, added to it. Since I took it over in two thousand and eleven, I've also added quite a few acres to it as well. Partially because, you know, as the area north of here becomes more popular, you get a lot of people that are buying small mining claims and building houses on them. Some of that's very compatible, but some of it's not compatible with cattle operations. We've had problems. We've had great neighbors and we've had some neighbors that haven't been very understanding of of our operation. So in the last ten fifteen years, we've done as much as we can to buy up the mining claims that are west of us just to create a buffer. So yes, it's it has, you know, it wasn't an easy task for my dad to put this together. It was a lifelong, a lot of blood, sweat and tears went into this. And it's in his heart. That's where his heart is. I mean, he loves that property. I think he's done a good job in allowing me to also have those feelings for it by giving me the, you know, in two thousand and eleven, he turned over the management of it to me. And it's not until I I learned that, you know, in your twenties, you think a certain way, your thirties, you think a certain way, your forties, it's another way. I'm fifty two now, or fifty one, and I would say, looking back, I probably shouldn't have taken it over until I was forty. Because when I was thirty, people were talking about golf courses. And I was like, Dad, why not a golf course? That'd be a beautiful place for a golf course. He was like, eh, no, not at eight thousand feet, first of all. You know, just everything evaporates. And that's not what he wanted for his property. So you know, my job is to make sure that my children also have that love for that property. And if they don't, who's backing me up? It's gonna be Michael Cunningham's next in line to his job. Because what we have signed up for is very clear. We've signed up for a certain plan that cannot be modified without the R M S permission. And that plan, we have to bond for. And the R M S has the ability to do this. So if so if my friend, if my kids move off to New York City and never look back and someone else is running this, I have that assurance that that to a certain extent, D R M S is going to keep their eye on this because it is a long, it's more than my life will will allow for. You know, some of the other elements of it, realigning the parkway was a big deal to us. We watched the parkway go through in two thousand and four. It was a conduit for gaming. It was going to make Central City into the next Black Hawk. It didn't happen. It just simply didn't happen. I think Central City has done an admirable job of maintaining a four lane parkway to their city, but they don't have the resources, in our opinion, to continue that in a way that keeps that road at a C D O standard or something close to a C D O standard. So over the last twenty years, you've seen, or eighteen years, you've seen the road settling in places. If you talk to any engineer logical that a hundred foot fill is going to settle by some percent. No matter how good the contractor is, how what what a great job they put that fill in there, there's going to be a factor of settling. You guys can attest to that. So that factor of settling happens over time. It doesn't happen in the first week. It happens very gradually over time. It's a geologic event. As that settling happens, where we notice it as consumers of the road is the surface area and the smoothness. So there's a lot of money that that road needs to keep it sustainable. Since since two thousand and four, that road has evolved into a regional asset. If you talk to, you can talk to Black Hawk, when one nineteen shuts down, boom, everybody goes over the parkway. You can talk to the fire and ambulance services. If there's an emergency or something where one road is blocked down, it's a second route out of Gilpin County. If you talk to residents of Gilpin County, the same thing goes. That's their conduit, I seventy to get to the ski slopes or to get to Denver when they have to go down there. Most of them will say they don't want to go down very often, but when they do, or if they commute to work. So it's become a regional asset that creating a funding source for it, a source that will allow that road to be kept at a C D O standard, that's one of our goals. And we're working through the details of that with the city, and that's the community component of this. So our goal is to create a road. So our goal is to create a road fee and a road management structure that allows this project to support the maintenance of the parkway over the course of the, of the mine's life. A couple of things that that does for us personally, so it's not just, we're not philanthropists. But what it does for us personally is that we have this ranch and we also have become accustomed to that road. And we do not want to see that road just crumble and not be sustainable over time. So there's a benefit to us. There's also, you know, if, if, you know, just from a safety standpoint, being able to care for that road, being able to realign it like we're showing, and let me share my screen again. Maybe I am sharing it. We are proposing to the city, and this has not been approved by D R S yet. Add a lot of words and stuff here. So if you look at this slide, it shows this road corridor that initially will just be an internal mine road. Yeah, pop it up again, sorry. Oh, I need to do it. It's just on the screen. Okay, so maybe I need to go back and share again.
Do you have any questions?
No, I think you answered.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'll just speak to it in, that there's a future plan to realign the parkway. By realigning the parkway, we take out the seven, seven or eight worst fill sections. When I say worst fill section, the largest fill section. So when you're coming down Floyd Hill, if you look across to the parkway, you see those big Vs that are disturbed. We're getting rid of those, the road in those Vs. Those Vs are problematic from a maintenance standpoint because they are so big that they just compact over time. So we're getting rid of that by realigning the road, taking a little over a mile of road off of the parkway. At the same time, we get rid of the eight percent grades. You go, there's an eight percent grade that goes all the way up to the top of the county line and then back down. We replace that with a five point three percent grade. So from a functional standpoint, we're creating a road that's much easier to maintain. Are we running out of time?
No, I was just gonna tell the mayor, I think Jared has a comment once you're done.
Oh, okay. I don't want to take too much time. Someone else. So essentially, that's our community proportion of it. It also benefits us. It benefits the mine as well. By realigning the road, having a better road, you know, we have committed to having a baseline that we are going to completely take over the maintenance of the first two point three miles of the road because that's what we will be using for our operation. And so if someone else is doing heavy hauling on that whole portion of the road, if there was another project or a construction project, they would also have to pay into the road fee. So we're just trying to create an even playing ground where some citizen in Central City or Gilpin doesn't feel like we're using the road without paying our fair share.
Right.
And that's not a requirement by the city. It's for the entitlements. It's a, it's, it's a negotiated agreement to make sure that we accomplish what we're looking for.
Makes sense. Jared, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had a quick question in regards to, I think, your comments really played into this. I understand that you're, you know, almost through the D R S process. How about working with the other jurisdictions such as county and Central City? Where are you with those processes or their processes?
Great. I'm gonna mention one quick thing first about the road. We have committed before we start mining to put in an underpass. So there's, we did a CDOT study. You can do a left turn into our project across traffic. That's safe from a CDOT standpoint, but it's not safe from your, from your typical person driving down the road and they see a semi pool in front of them. It doesn't feel safe. So we have committed to doing an underpass so that the truck traffic will exit the parkway on the right-hand side, take an off-ramp, slow down, turn underneath of an, on, underpass and get into our project. That does a couple of things. One, it alleviates that traffic situation. But it also allows us to have an on-ramp that is adequately long enough to allow for basically just allow dirt migration on this parkway. So, you know, if you're, if you're driving by our site as we're up and fully running, we have committed to not allowing any dirt onto the public right of way. We feel that's important from a lot of, for a lot of reasons. But it's also something that you can engineer. And yes, it's expensive. No, that underpass, all that infrastructure is very expensive. Our mind can afford it. So we are approaching this as a neighbor as well. Like we care what happens to it. Okay, to get back to your question about the, the local process. I've reached out to the Clear Creek County Planner. I've talked to Gilpin County about it. I've talked to Blackhawk. I've sat down with you guys a few times. I've talked to Central City. When I spoke to Adam at, at Clear Creek County, he asked the same question. What is the local process like? What I told him, what he suggested actually was that, I said, we were thinking about doing an annexation. This is quite a while ago. I said, we're thinking about doing an annexation into Central City because most of the benefit, the roof fee and whatnot, goes towards some agency that needs to manage this for the long run. And my thought was the Central City Council will change over time. But every one of those council members will have a vested interest in the local area. Okay, so that local council will, even if it's fifty years from now, I may not even be around. But if something were to come up on our project where there was a question, should you do this or can we do that? Or, you know, oh, we like that, but now we're gonna change it, then that council has jurisdiction. So Adam suggested that, in his mind, a, an annexation would make sense because we're in two counties. And consolidating the jurisdiction into one entity makes sense. Because of his recommendation and because of conversations with Gilpin County, even with Blackhawk, we, we went ahead with an annexation with Central City. We completed that annexation. It got approved last month. So we're now, the property is annexed into, into Central City. And the next process is to bring them up to speed with our mine plan, with, you know, all of that and get a formal CUP slash mining permit from Central City, which is a public process and something that, you know, we look forward to working through the detail of.
Does council have any questions of Mr. Cunningham or Mr. Young?
So just to clarify, it just sounds like, so now that you're, that the, is it the mine or the entire four thousand acres that it's annexed into?
Just the mine.
So, and then that, that mine still borders or sits on Clear Creek County property?
So Clear Creek County will, it, it's, so we, the RMS calls it affected area. So the actual mine area within Clear Creek County is about sixty acres. There's more, probably more like a hundred and sixty acres within Clear Creek County. But most of that is that ridge that we're using as a buffer zone. So that ridge using it as a buffer zone, using it as a wildlife mitigation corridor also benefits us because it's a wind block. You know, anybody that's spent time in this area knows from Empire down to Highway six, it's a wind tunnel at times. So having that ridge there blocks the wind in, in many ways.
It's a tax question. I'm just curious. So from a county, the county has been, I'm not gonna get any of the taxes from the mine.
It doesn't affect the county tax. And I looked into that because that was the first question that came up. How does it affect the county?
But does it, well, with the sales tax?
Well, it's, I mean, there, and there's other types. The question is, so the county will not get any tax revenue from your sales or your, what you got going on at the mine at all anymore?
So I was told that from a property, so the, the state handles property tax as they have this Haskell rate that they assign it. It's based on how much you mine. So what we'll have to do at our site is keep track of how many mo-, how many tons are mined out of Clear Creek and how many tons are mined out of Gilpin. So all of the mill levies for school for whatever it is.
Should apply to the property that the mine sits on.
Apply to the property that the mine sits on and that is actively, so if we took out ten from one and ten from the other, it'd be even.
But it's the annexation that makes me curious because I, I don't know if that over, kind of overrules what would be.
I think you're right from a property or from a sales tax standpoint.
Yeah, it would go to.
It would probably go to Central City.
Yeah, which, if you have land in your county, why would you wanna give it to someone else? You know, I mean, that's revenue.
Yeah, so from a properties, property tax standpoint, it doesn't affect it from a, so if we're actually selling rock, it's.
All I'm saying is if you can afford to build a bunch of new roads, then we are losing out on quite a substantial amount of money. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You, you could be right. You could be right. From a county, you're saying from a county standpoint?
Well, I don't know, because I don't think, I, you're not in any part of Incorporated Idaho Springs, so it would all be county money. But that does help everybody in this room that lives in Clear Creek County, so.
Sure.
It's, it sounds like it's a done deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as I understand it, the, the tax that you're talking about at a quarry is the point of sale. So if that load is, goes down to Aurora to asphalt plant or concrete plant, that point of sale is there, not here. So Central City doesn't.
Yeah, sure.
That, that's my, that's what I've been told, that the, the sales tax is where.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, punch sale, that's correct.
Yeah, I, I, and I agree, and I, I don't think there would be a whole lot of sale.
In here right now.
I don't think there would be regardless, but, but I, I hadn't thought about that in relation to the county. I can say that if a load went to Aurora, it was made into concrete and then that concrete was delivered to Denver, the sales tax would be in Denver. So you, I don't know all of that, but that's what I've been told. But from a property, from a property tax standpoint, being annexed does not affect that.
We're almost out of time. Does council have any further questions for Mr. Cunningham or, or Mr. Young? All right. Well, I want to thank everybody for their contribution on this subject. I've got one more issue for the work session. And that is Building one oh three, call for proposals that are due by July twenty-second.
Yes, sir. I'll go very quickly. The school district has been working to look at what the development of the old middle school into the new elementary school looks like. In that process, they've identified that there is space in the building on the upper levels that could be used for another use. I think it's, I want to say it's like thirty thousand square feet is what we heard. But that could be just dependent on their design and planning and everything like that. The Board of Education wants to create a process by which community groups can express interest in that additional space. Any group that would be utilizing that space for any use would have to be compatible with the school, the kids that are there. So it can be something that wouldn't work with kids, has to be safe and secure.
Would it be like a police department?
Potentially. That's one of the reasons that we wanted to bring this to you. They're asking for proposals by the twenty-second. It's a Google form. We could say that we're interested in any of these uses. There's a couple of communities that have been suggested, like a community art center, a childcare facility, and then this police center idea, potentially even maybe we look at that use where we might have another city hall or council chamber that would be bigger and allow for more participation when we do have those big meetings. But that could be, you know, compatible with the police use.
Space, yeah.
So what we wanted to do is see if we should submit a proposal to the school district for some kind of municipal participation in that space. The thing is due on the twenty-second. It's a Google form. It's very simple. They're going to discuss proposals late summer and decisions early fall. I do think our uses with the way that that space is set up could be compatible with the rec, with this arts idea of having a theater up there.
There is a theater.
Right, it's a very nice theater too. And then there's a really nice big open classroom up there, which is really cool. So we, yeah.
Oh.
It's a two hundred and twenty cent.
Is there enough room upstairs to open it up? And, and this, this shoot, I mean, you can make a fortune here with a, a music venue upstairs.
That's one of the things they've been discussing. There's an arts group that's working right now and they've been looking at that. So I think that's one of the things that we wanted to bring this for, because you don't really get opportunities for a relatively large space like that. Like we would potentially be able to work with, even if we work with other groups to make something happen. I think it could be really cool. So I, I wanted to see if we should submit a proposal.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I, I, all right, I mean, nobody would be against that early. I mean,
No way.
We can just explore. It doesn't cost anything to take.
Let's do it.
Yeah. Okay, I will go ahead and submit something and can put a draft together, two on the twenty-second, which may be a little quick to come back to council. But along the lines of what we just discussed, I think we have a little bit of flexibility. I don't think it has to be, we have to say exactly a hundred percent, so. Yeah. Email us and let us, we could respond. I think we've done that in the past. Okay.
I think too, as long as it doesn't go against anything that would be with the school there, you can prove self mundine. That's gonna be the biggest challenge.
Yeah, yeah, really. Well, thank you very much. It is seven o'clock. We'll take a button at Comfort Gate and we'll convene your regular session at seven oh five.
Thanks, everyone. For you guys to have a better spot, I would do it.
I can't plus the need. It's bothering me.
I've been working on it.
It's not working.
Oh, thank you very much. Yes. Okay. Oh, thank you very much. Okay, good.
And I put one for everyone.
Oh, thanks.
What? What's up? Oh, I'm just packing. I know. Because I have this huge, um, huge deadline and I have another deadline and I have something.
Everything okay?
Yeah, I'm frustrated. I have the things that I'm trying to. I'm trying to make it happen. I'm trying to make it happen, and it happens. How are you?
I'm good. I was, are you gonna try to come by for girl thing? Yeah, on the twenty-second? Yeah. Rachel's gonna be there.
I'll do so. It's just a nice response. Yeah, I think that's, that's next for you.
Yeah, next for you.
Seriously, they're like, I don't forgive them. I'm like, I'm really gone.
And I'll reach out to the caller again.
Okay, I'm, are you gonna be okay? Anything I lose? No, no, no.
Why I don't like these ends?
I know, I'm older, more, no, um, I have some plans and the plans are good. Good size speaker. Oh, well, thank you. Well, hopefully, we'll see. Hopefully I should have, should keep straight. Um, hopefully I'll have, I don't know. About the eight percent. Yeah.
There's a couple of people that you you might meet.
Oh, that's cool. Yeah.
Well, hello, everyone, and I wanna thank everybody for coming to the uh Monday, July eleven, twenty twenty two, uh regular city council meeting. Um, and we'll start off with roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yeah.
Kate Collier.
Here.
Lisa Manifield. Here. Don Curtis.
Here.
Jim Clark.
Here.
Art Cacavelli.
Here.
Scott Kenner.
Here. All right, uh, please, uh, everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Uh, we have an agenda before us. Uh, could I have a motion?
Open for agenda for July eleven, two thousand and twenty two.
Thank you, John. Do I have a second? All right, I have a first and a second. Uh, any discussion? All right, uh, all in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Does anyone tonight feel that they have a conflict of interest? Oh, oh, no, you don't have any bills.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
All right, um, on to approval of the minutes. Uh, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the minutes from June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty two.
Uh, thank you, Art. And uh, do I have a second? Second. I have a first and a second. Uh, any discussion of the minutes? All right, all those in favor, please uh raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, approval of the bills. Uh, may I have a motion?
I move to approve the bills to July eleven, two thousand and twenty two.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
And a second, uh, any discussion of the bills? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Kate Collier. Yes. Lisa Manifield.
Yes.
Don Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Art Cacavelli.
Yes.
Scott Kenner.
Yes. All right, thank you. Uh, uh, if anyone would like to make a public comment, uh, please sign up. Uh, if you did sign up, it doesn't mean that they you have to. And uh, looks like we're gonna start out tonight with Dennis Gimble regarding continued theft and damage of his property.
Hello, Mr. Gimble. Will you just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Dennis Gimble. I live at seven oh four Colorado Boulevard here in Idaho Springs. I've lived here in Idaho Springs for forty seven years. I'm a Christian, born again. I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I'm an American patriot. And I'd like to know whom I am speaking to. How many of the city's staff members are veterans of U.S. military service? Thank you. For a reason for being here is the damage and theft I have have experienced at my residence here in Idaho Springs. On December fifth, twenty twenty one, I reported to the local police department a break-in and attempted theft of my two thousand three Chevy pickup in front of my residence while parked on Colorado Boulevard and Seventh Avenue. The responding officer told me, I hate to tell you this, but there's nothing we can do. The repair took three months because of parts cost me almost sixteen hundred dollars. On March sixteenth this year, twenty twenty two, I reported theft of a collectible bicycle in my backyard. The responding officer said, well, it may be due to drugs, whatnot. On June seventh of this year, I reported second break-in of my same pickup, two thousand three Chevy pickup while parked on Seventh on Colorado Boulevard. The thieves pulled the door lock, but they didn't get, they didn't get the truck. My peace and property and tranquility are under attack, and I wonder at times when will I be confronted by this same threat on my, on a personal level, on my own property, in the dark of night or day? This dark evil element has crept in solely over the forty seven years I've lived here, and is, it is disturbing to see at the least, and it is dangerous, in my opinion. Colorado is number one in the nation in car thefts and carjackings, and no end in sight, no indication. State legislature is inclined to do anything about it. This anarchy and lawlessness has been growing across this nation for decades, starting in the big city environment, and now it has affected the entire country. I'm here asking for help from those who hold positions to confront and stop this assault on the citizens of Idaho Springs and Clear Creek County who pay the bills for life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness guaranteed by the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of these United States.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. Just because uh this is part of a public comment, uh, council, uh, we do have an additional letter that uh you should find uh from uh Mr. uh Slaymaker. And it was too late to make the regular package, but we didn't want to include it with uh tonight's. And I'd like to start off a public comment with uh Ken Slaymaker, uh, the author of this letter. Read it.
Name and address for the record, please.
Ken Slaymaker, uh, twenty thirty six Virginia Street. Thanks for uh distributing the letter. I I'm here tonight representing a collection of downtown business owners and residents. Uh, it's in regard to the, what the letter you have in front of you, the gun shows in town on Saturdays and wherever they are. Uh, I like historic reenactment and uh in living history, I even like a good gun show. They're fun. Uh, I'm saddened to be reporting this night, and it has nothing to do with my opinion of the gun show, what people run. I find them to be really nice folks. Uh, it's an unfortunate reality that we have daily match shootings in this country and other violence in this very town. Uh, and I question the wisdom of firing weapons regularly in a very crowded downtown area. Downtown area pretty much exactly like the eleven that were fired into on July fourth or anything like that. And they get fired at you every single day in this country multiple times. Um, this is causing actual harm. This isn't a what if X happens type of situation. This isn't someone could be at there. I see it every, during every single show, every single day. I happen to work on Saturdays in a shop, and so I personally see it. We have, we've had customers die behind our bar. I think it was an actual shooting. Bad customers have panic attacks that cause uh tears streaming down their face. We've had a gentleman who was a veteran that had caused a, in his words, PTSD flashback. His wife told me that he needed a place to calm down. He went to the back of our shop for fifteen minutes or so before he could come back out, and then they left out. We've had multiple customers. Uh, I I've started warning people uh twenty fifteen minutes before every single person comes in that it's gonna be happening. Uh, they've also done a good job with P A system and signs. It's unfortunate that they're not doing that, that the signs and P A system is doing the trick. The Wild Bunch has been making an effort, but unfortunately, it hasn't been reaching everyone. Uh, the worst part for me, I don't know about worst part, one of the many bad parts is that it seems to affect young people, the most uh teenagers and folks in their twenties. We don't have many teenagers in a wine bar, but sometimes they're the kids of customers. Uh, these are folks who have lived through many active shooter drills in their life. Uh, I'm fairly young, and they hadn't even really started doing that while I was in school. I don't even know their life. I can only imagine. These folks have lived through it. Uh, I've had folks leave in the middle of their wine tasting. Uh, probably would have spent money. Not that it's about spending money or making money. It's about people's welfare. Uh, but I bet people leave town, uh, say, well, they at least told me, well, we go. God forbid, a good guy with a gun is around the corner and hears, then decides to try to save the day. Good favor or not. Uh, perhaps we can find a milk brown. I I don't wanna pick out a town. I I like these folks. I like history. Perhaps we can find a milk brown that doesn't involve shooting weapons in a crowded downtown area. Uh, I just request that y'all seriously consider this issue. Like I said, I represent a few different businesses and restaurants. It's not just. Have a good day. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ken. Um, Chuck Fallen, you're up next. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Chuck Fallen, uh, I'll give you the physical address, fourteen thirty five Chicago Creek Road, number ten. Okay, thank you. Um, it's very disturbing. I uh, I'm a combat veteran, and I've also been diagnosed with PTSD, and uh to have any is bad. The reason I think we're here in town is because I'm a resident, part-time here, and I wanted to do what we could do to help businesses in in town, and this is what we do. And we do uh shows. We give history lessons, and uh I've worked up three history lessons on on uh Idaho Springs and uh stuff that's happened with us, and uh and then uh we after that, they, you know, I talk too long, so there's a lot of discussion amongst us why I'm talking too long, and then we get to and we're all done. And uh uh, but I'm, you know, I'm very disturbed to hear the people that really it's causing them problems, you know? That's not what I wanna do. Uh, we the last two shows, I'm looking, and we have a a P A system online, and I'm going. Well, I can tell people over the P A system, you know, twenty minutes before we do our gunfights, fifteen countdown, five, four, three, two, one, and and turn the P A up really loud, and then we also walk around and and we put bigger signs on our road. They're about that big, right? And uh, and and he he'd say, you know, because he's telling people in his shop, you know, that it, things were better this weekend than the first one. And uh, so it's kind of a conundrum, you know? We talked to other businesses in the area about of moving to another location, but you know, would that be, and they're like, no, 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 no. You bring in a lot of foot traffic, so. I mean, there's some positives and some definite negatives to the whole thing, and I'm not I don't, I can't come up with a solution, you know? I don't know what uh what to do. I know, um, because we were granted our permit, we went and spent quite a bit of money to be able to honor our commitment for the shows this summer, you know? And uh, and the way things are, it's, everything is extremely expensive for what we do. And uh, I think that's about all I have to say. I'm I'm sorry, you guys, the stones are blown up and everything. It's just such a.
Chuck, thank you, and I will say normally, we don't have any back and forth in public comment. Uh, I just have one quick question. It's a mystery. Uh, who is funding the shows?
Oh, we do it ourselves.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Kate, may I make a statement?
Well, Kate, we're actually gonna get into this subject uh under the uh
Okay.
uh mayor and council. Just to let you know, we will talk about it though, but I I had to get to the bottom of where the where the money was coming from.
Yeah, we we paid for everything on our own, and then any tips or money we receive, we give to the historical society.
Last year's season. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you very much. Uh, Mike from Blackhawk, please uh come up and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry we're here again like this. Mike Keeler. Um, I'm at twenty six East Glory Way in Blackhawk. Eight oh four two. Thank you.
Um, first, I wanna start off that we're not politicians, we're actors. We bring people into town. If, have any of you even come to see the shows that we do? Because we bring a lot of people. Um, most of them are at our our end of the street. They're sitting in the park waiting for our shows. They do this every Saturday. Last year, we did uh, we did seven weeks. How many shows was that?
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight shows. We had one complaint because it scared our dog. Um, and then this week, we've already got, you know, we've done two weeks already. This is the first time anybody's really said anything about it. Um, I was, when I was approached, it was, can we reach a compromise? What kind of compromise is that? Well, you guys can pack up all your stuff and get the hell out of town. The second one was, oh, you can do your shows without your guns. No way. No way. So anyway, I just wanna tell you, we are actors, and you can look us up on Facebook. You can see what we do. Last Saturday, I was out there giving safety lessons to families and their kids. They loved it. I literally took my gun apart to show them what it's all about. We use reenactment guns. If nobody's ever seen those, they're not like the guns that Alec Baldwin used. Um, our guns are sealed, totally sealed. You can't even get a live round in our guns. It only takes one nine mil length, and that's it. If anything else, the brass won't fit, period. And that's the hundred percent safety that we have. Years ago, when I started, fifteen years ago, we were using black powder. I was using eighteen fifty ones when I was using. And uh, I felt that they could get dangerous down the road. That's why I had all my cowboys switch over to these these pistols. Um, if you watch, we're on our way, we're on our way to a show out of state uh Thursday, and it's called the uh Shootout on the Santa Fe Trail. If you wanna bring that up on your screen and check it uh at the end of next week, please do. You'll see the old movie stars and westerns. They get involved with us. Everybody does. This is a two hundred people in an encampment, and people pay to come in and watch these shows on and on and on. And they're people with, they're gunfighters. You know, we're not a, we're not fast draw people. We're, we like comedy. All of our shows are comedy. That's why we attract everybody in the family. We try to make it family-friendly. And we always did that, always. I even do shows in Central City uh during our creepy crawls in the buildings that we use, and I use my black powder, but only I use a cap in there too. So these, this is, what I'm trying to say is, please, we are actors. Some may not think we are, but we work hard out there in that street. I I left after talking to this gentleman here. I walked up and down the street, and every store I went into, they liked us. And one I went into, him and his wife, I think they own an antique store. I told him that he was trying to get rid of us for some reason. I don't know why all the people that have a complaint go to his store. I don't have, I haven't heard anything else about that. But they, when they said, man, if we could get on that end of the street, we would love it.
Mike, I'm sorry. We're just running out of time.
I'm sorry, I have so much to say. It's just that thank you. Thank you all, and I appreciate you letting us come in and talk again, and we do everything we. And we do everything we can. We do have the big signs. I make big signs. We have rope signs. We did everything we can to do this. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, Paul Ryan, uh, welcome. Please come up. Oh, yeah, you, you don't have to, uh, but I, I want to give you the opportunity.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right. Uh, Danny Tomlinson, uh, please, welcome.
Good evening, friends. It's good to see everybody.
Can you state your name and address for reference, please?
Yes, Danny Tomlinson. I live at thirty-eight Virginia Canyon Road on, in Idaho Springs.
Thank you.
And, uh, my family first moved here in nineteen fifty-seven. Uh, my wife and I moved back here to the house I grew up in permanently about ten or twelve years ago. And, uh, we, I, I, I'm a retired lobbyist from the state legislature. One of the clients that I worked for for about twenty-five years during my lobbying career was Economic Development Council of Colorado, the umbrella organization for all economic development throughout the state, large and small organization. The one thing that I think Clerk Creek County, Idaho Springs, Georgetown, Central City, Gilford County have is opportunity for tourism. And we don't have a lot of heavy manufacturing or anything like that. We've got Henderson Mine and we've got the, the Walstrom Quarry. But other than that, we don't have anything much other than tourism. And I think that also it's important to remember that we have the heritage and the history of Colorado. This is within twenty-mile radius of where we are right now. Is where Colorado is a territory and Colorado as a state began. I think tourist attractions like the Wild Bunch are extremely important to people who have perhaps never experienced mining, history, Old West, that sort of thing, and it causes them to come up here, empty their wallets, buy a lunch, buy a beer, buy a T-shirt they didn't know they needed until they saw it in the store, and go back home and say, I can't wait to get back up there again next weekend. And I think uh, uh, we have to keep in mind that the Wild Bunch are a group of actors. These are, they're, they're portraying, it, it's a fun event and, um, and, and they're portraying something that happens in movies and kids' games and all that sort of thing. And it's, it's unfortunate that some people take offense to gunshots or they're, they're physically or emotionally bothered by it. But at the same time, I think each and every one of us has a great deal of personal responsibility that we have to take. And I think that the, uh, the, the warnings that, that Chuck and, and Mike and, and others do in terms of we're gonna start our show in five minutes or ten minutes, we're gonna, we've got the signage out there, should cause people to take responsibility for their own actions and get in their car or go to the bar and drink beer with the TV going or whatever, so that they don't have that experience, and let the other ninety-nine percent of the people that enjoy and that actually come out to watch the show enjoy the show. As an example, yesterday at, at Nevadaville, we had five hundred people come up for the pancake breakfast for the Masonic Lodge fundraiser. The Wild Bunch was there, the cavalry reenactors were there, and people were leaving their breakfast, getting up to come out onto the, the porch of the Masonic Lodge to watch the show. This is entertainment. This isn't real gunfights, and it's unfortunate that there are people in the world that choose to, to use guns in an, in unlawful way, but this is entertainment. This isn't about, uh, trying to, uh, create a boogeyman. These, these guys are entertainers, and they have so much fun, and the crowd loves them. Quite honestly, they love them.
Danny, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, I hope I'm not butchering this name, but, uh, Krasta, uh, is next.
Hi, Stella.
Uh, it, it looks like K-R-A-S-T-A?
Nope, and that's K-R-I.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry about that, but, but welcome and, and please come up.
Thank you. Krista. Uh, I'm a little late for all. So, thank you for allowing me, uh, this, this moment in time. Uh, also, thank you for your leadership in our community. This is a responsibility that is very regular. I would like to sincerely say, um, that I appreciate what that takes for you to sit in your positions. I'm a merchant uptown. Um, I had heard that we have, uh, invited or are experiencing gunshots on minor street on Saturdays nowadays. Um, something I wasn't exactly aware of in that I do not work Saturdays, but I did find myself in the store this past Saturday working. And I was there when the gunshots erupted. Um, I will say this, uh, I've been to several, um, uh, reenactment, uh, gatherings where there are two hundred, four hundred, five hundred people. They're all there for reenactment. It was a blast. I had a, a booth there. I had a wonderful time. I, I'm really glad that I got to do that. And of course, I appreciate our history. Um, however, it's a little different when you're a campout with four and five hundred people that are all there to reenact. They all have it in their heart to reenact. They have their costuming. They've put the infinite amount of money towards it, and that's what they're there to do. But, yeah, um, at the time that I did the reenactment, uh, festival, I must admit, was well before we started having the school shootings. I'm not really sure when that began with Columbine, but I'm guessing, I think it's right around twenty years ago now. And of course Columbine shocked the, the country and our state and certainly our area. Um, and we've been shocked, you know, real regular since then. It started kind of slow. But it seems like right now it's almost a kind of a daily occurrence. I personally do not teach the children. I personally don't have a child in school. But if I had a child in school that was going through daily or weekly or monthly or annually, or however often, that child is made to practice getting under their desk, just in case anyone comes in and starts, you know, opening fire. It's not something I dealt with when I was in school. I felt very safe at school, but it was a smaller school, so I can't really relate to people who are in city and have city school. Um, and I know ours is small, but gee whiz, if I were a person whose life that was impacted on a regular basis, that on the Fourth of July parades, we can have someone on the roof of the building, you know, nine hundred miles from us, or however far Chicago is, big enough people in the parade, that had happened just one week ago today. So as much as I respect and appreciate history, we have to also be aware of where we're at right now as a country, of what we're going home to every night to hear of other people's lives that are having to deal with that. Or maybe we are a teacher or, or have the children in our exact school system. Why, why would we want to invite gunshots onto main street? That's an invitation to multiply and gain energy and become larger, and one day it could be something, you know, we don't know, but we have to be very gentle about what we invite to come our way.
Krista, thank, thank you very much, and I am sorry for missing, messing your name up. Uh, but personal duel, I, I appreciate it. Uh, everybody is restricted to three minutes. I, I have let people go over by several seconds, but, uh, thank you for your comment. I really appreciate it. Uh, Denise, uh, please come up. You're welcome.
Ms. Clements, lead actress.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm Denise. Um, I appreciate history, and I appreciate these gentlemen very much. And I played cowgirls when I, and I had a cap gun, and I had a great time in my childhood. But I am worried about the shots that I heard. I was downtown for quite some time, listening to music, doing my thing. I went home and not too long after I got there, I heard a volley of shots. They were loud. They were loud where I was. I have a hearing deficit. I heard them. And it scared me. I will say this. It scared me. I'm thinking it's scaring maybe a lot of children in our schools, in this town, anywhere. And I just think the community was not really perhaps well enough prepared for what was gonna go down. I wasn't. I got scared, and I, I stopped what I was doing. I was going to make sure my doors were locked to get down on the floor if I heard any more. But the volley was short. It wasn't very long. But I do have a suggestion, perhaps. I don't know if it's possible for them, for you to do your jobs, your educators, reenact, but just not so loud. If the shots were not so loud and so real sounding, I think it could make a big difference. So I, I wasn't prepared for any shots because I never saw any of the, or paid attendance. Maybe it was my thing, you know, just having a good time and not reading signage. So I knew nothing. I just thought shots had been fired. But when it stopped, it was short. I realized something, it was something else. I knew once fireworks was a time for fireworks, but at any rate, I just want to throw in my two cents. And if we could do it, just not so loud, I think it might be good.
Does fireworks scare you too?
Yes, well, I don't. Yeah.
Denise, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for listening.
All right, next up, Chris Lymaker. Uh, welcome.
Kristen Lymaker, twenty-three sixty Virginia Street, Idaho Springs. Hi, thank you. I am here because I am, believe it or not, I have done quite a bit of living history in my life. Um, before my current occupation, running a minaret, and before a child, I don't want to admit how many hours I have spent in courses and stays and petticoats with my overdress on top of that, plus grapecoats. But I've been in swamps making floating fires, that I have worked camp kitchens, that I have gone into schools taking programming in, in full costume. I don't want to know how many loads of laundry I have washed by hand in eighteen sixties garb and eighteen twelve garb, and that I wore in, that I had especially made for me circa nineteen eighteen maternity dress to continue doing living history, or by Rosie the Riveter character. So what I'm here is to say that there is definitely a place for costume, history, and reenactment. But the other thing, in all my experiences doing living history, with one exception, we never brought the firearms out because there was nothing the firearms could add. And not one exception is when I got to attend the two-hundredth anniversary of the Battle of Shellment in the War of eighteen twelve. And that, there was this schedule, very well scheduled, and people got to choose to watch the battle reenactment. And people got to come to the field and were invited and intentionally chose to come watch, uh, living historians practice drill. And so what I would really hope is that the Wild Bunch can stay in town, that they keep doing their costume history because it is wonderful and it adds something. But they find a way to interpret and tell the stories of this area and the West and the people that live here. And maybe not just more, not just the mining era and not just our kind of cowboy area, but maybe talk about how this was a Spanish steed in place once. And maybe make mention of some of the other people that were here even before those of your hand supplement. And introduce people to history and share it with them and share this love, but do it in a way where we leave the firing of guns out of it. And that is what I ask. Thank you for hearing me out there.
Thank you, Chris. And, uh, next up, Bruce Boynton. Welcome.
How you guys doing? Bruce Boynton, sixteen four.
Great, thank you.
Um, I see where everyone's going with this, and I see all the angle, you know, I'm looking at all the angles, and I understand. Uh, me, I'm for the shows, but with everything that's been going on in the world these days, I understand where the concern is. I think our issue maybe i- if we can make it so everybody knows what's going on. I mean, it's, yeah, they got the, we got the signs, you know, you got, and the PA, but I think we're, we have to do a little bit more than that to let everybody in the area know what's happening. Like down on our side of the street, didn't have any issues. I haven't heard any complaints. Um, maybe the option is, is moving it, you know, where they used to do it over by Gips and Rose and actually post something, you know, things up that says reenactments, you know, taking place at this time, that, you know, that way anybody in the area, you know, make it big and bright enough, you know, make it glow so everybody knows what's going on, you know, maybe get it, I mean, I'd hate to see it leave the heart of minor street, but, uh, I think we just need to make it more known that it's gonna happen. Uh, I mean, Idaho Springs, this is the mining town. This is where they struck gold in Colorado. I think the town should play a lot more of the mining heritage than more of yupping it up, making it a little Breckenridge, and make it a destination for, uh, you know, for the mining people. Like I've always said before, put a train around the place, people, you make a fortune. But I mean, make it to where people are bringing their kids for these events, you know, to learn about mining, to learn about the Old West. I mean, to take away freedoms that people fought for, and that's why people, you know, have PTSD. We, and we signed on for that. I mean, we understand that, you know, our lives are gonna be different and, wow, yeah, what was that? But hey, I mean, it's, those are the freedoms that were fought for. And to take those freedoms away, there's gotta be a compromise somewhere. I mean, you can't just take it all away from everyone because that's not what it's about. But let's find a middle ground, maybe, you know, let's figure it out. And if it takes another meeting or two to figure it out, or some sort of work session where we all brainstorm, let's do it. I'll help you. I mean, that's, I'm all about it. But I understand where some people get a little leery, but they have to remember where this country came from, why it's here, and why we're still here.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, and we didn't have any complaints at our store, but I could see if people didn't know what was going on, and they're sitting there eating with their kids, all of a sudden, yeah, just make sure they know about it. It shouldn't be an issue.
All right. Well, thank you. That, uh, concludes our public comment.
My name was on the list and you didn't call it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Holly Ryan. I was like second or.
Oh, uh, you know what? I, I apologize. So please come up. You're, you're more than welcome. I'm sorry. I skipped you.
My name's Holly Ryan. Um, I'm new to Idaho Springs. I've only been here, my husband and I, about five and a half, almost six years. And, um, we don't normally go downtown and spend money because that's when, you know, busy and everybody's here. Um, but we've been actually coming downtown to, to see the show when we heard about it. Um, we even up, went up to Nevadaville when we read it in the newspaper and stuff to get some of the history and for the gun show. So we've actually been spending money downtown the last few weekends where we normally wouldn't. Um, we appreciate the, the Colorado heritage. Um, I think at one point you guys set the cannon off downtown here. That was awesome. I mean, you know, to, to be in a small town, we moved from Denver. I grew up in Montrose. I like the small-town history. Um, I like to have the reenactments. Um, I thought the signage and the announcements, um, on the PA, I mean, you know, just to get pictures with them that, you know, I have on my phone from all of their outfits and everything was great. But, um, you know, we really enjoy it. Like I said, we've actually started coming downtown to see the shows and spend money and eat a pickaxe pizza and, and do some shopping that we normally wouldn't do because the show is here. So, thank you.
Holly, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Sorry for skipping. I didn't mean to do that. Uh, that concludes the public comment, and, uh, we're gonna move on to resolutions, and, uh, uh, first up is resolution number thirteen. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve resolution number thirteen, series twenty-two, resolution adopting, uh, twenty-twenty-two Clerk Creek County. Resolution adopting, uh, twenty twenty-two Clear Creek County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the ha- hazard mitigation plan for the city.
Thank you, Kate. And do I have a second?
I second.
And, and a second discussion.
I actually have a question. And it talked about, um, it talked about how the erosion and, you know, movement of land is a very high risk for Idaho Springs. Do we have our own plan? Because they said Idaho Springs was a high risk. You know, over the county overall was low, Empire and Georgetown are medium. Do we have our own plan for that? Like? I, I don't know. That's why, and I looked and didn't see.
I, I want to tell you that I don't think we have, uh, our own, but I, I just want to point out that erosion is actually low.
Well, overall for the county it's low, but if you look, it says that Idaho Springs is high.
Are you talking about Wall Street, Lisa?
No, no, actually, I'm talking about the whole, I'm not just talking about Wall Street.
Well, I've actually, I've gone into the insurance about it and there's not a whole lot that we can do as a city because it's, because the way the Wall Street's set up.
Substance hazard is high for Idaho Springs. So is that part of like our super fund or? Um, it's page one dash four. If you look, it says erosion and deposition, expensive soil and substance is low overall. But our substance hazard is high for Idaho Springs.
It could be minerals.
I'm guessing that's what that means, yeah.
They're on, they're on.
Does that fall into our super fund plan or? I'm sorry if you realize this, I just didn't know.
I'm not sure what they base that upon.
Well, I thought it was weird if weird and high and other people are medium. Medium, how is the whole overall county low? Is it just all your areas or?
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, because I've been to all these meetings for this. So my understanding, it has to do with the, the millings and what, and the water issue. So it's more of the, if things were to degrade and get into the water. So why, you were talking about earlier? So that's why I understood that to be.
Substance.
Certainly, this Office of Emergency Management for the county is really from the agency. And apparently that's the way they, they classified that five years ago when they had done that. So when we were having our discussion, it sounded reasonable that they keep it at that level.
Chief, thank, thank you for shedding a better light on that. I read every word of this. And you shed more light on it. As Scott Penel's pointing out, it actually does say substance erosion. So I think you're, you're spot on with lead or acid getting into the, yeah.
Correct. That's what it would be referenced to. But as far as the plan specifically for the city, I'm not aware of a specific plan.
That might fall under super fund though, because super fund monitors that too and they do monitor, usually monitor for that. Okay, thank you.
And that, uh, any further discussion?
Well, this is a topic that made in the news a couple of days ago.
Hmm, if it did, I didn't see it.
Now I have the link. I'll send it to you, but yeah.
All right. Anything further? All right, roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes, Lisa Manifol.
Yes, Tom Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Art Packaville.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Yes. All right, uh, we'll move on to ordinance second reading. Uh, we only have one of these and it's ordinance number five. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number five's, uh, series twenty twenty-two. An ordinance approving the lease of real property owned by the city at three ninety Chicago Creek Road on two forty highway one oh three to Clear Creek County for the existing ambulance station.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I second.
Uh, thank you, Art. Uh, first and a second, any discussion? Uh, hearing none, now roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Tom Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Art Packaville.
Scott Penel.
Yes. All right. And our city attorney has patiently been standing by. Uh, welcome, Carmen.
I know. And after all that, I do not have anything for you, at least for now. We'll talk, um, in exec session, mayor, council.
Okay, all right. Uh, uh, city administrator is not here tonight, but, uh, he has reported that there's no request for action. And, uh, I'd like to move on, uh, to, uh, assistant, uh, city administrator, Jonathan, do you have anything new for us tonight?
Mayor Council, I have no request for action.
Okay. And, uh, deputy clerk, uh, you have no request for action as well?
Mayor Council, I have my staff report in front of you and I do not have any requests.
All right. Uh, chief, uh, anything further for us tonight?
Uh, no, you have my staff report with no request for action. I will like to note today is, uh, a day to say you should be proud. We have sent our first person to a police academy and as far as I know, I think it's the first time the city's ever done that. So, um, so thanks for the support.
Nice. And that would be Kate, uh, who will be with us after, uh, cat. All right. And we have them guaranteed for two years, right?
Three.
Oh, three. All right. Very good. Thank you. Um, Public Works Department, uh, John, uh, I see we've got, uh, at least one controversial one there with the, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, uh, uh, landscape over there and, and design work at the library. And I just want to ask you, this is a case where we put it out, we only got one bid and it ends up being more than fifty thousand dollars.
More than the last.
Or less work.
With less work. That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, like I stated, Mayor, um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for one bid. That does not include the building repairs, which unfortunately in this climate, I wouldn't even venture a guess. Probably over a hundred thousand dollars just to repair the building.
Are you talking about the site, the faces mine issue?
Both, the whole building, the handrails, the, um, grout and that for the building, the steps. Unfortunately, it's a, it's a.
Can't we go back to those people that did the historical, um, remodel on it and say that they did a poor job?
Well, I mean, that's been a few years ago. I don't think that their warranty would cover that. Unfortunately, I, I believe it's an extreme amount of money for the size of that yard in front of the library.
Yeah.
Kate, I mean, is it, I, I didn't get to see the proposal, honestly, so, because that was before I was on council. And I know we had talked about putting turf down rather than putting in mines of water and that kind of stuff and drainage. Was that part of this proposal or no?
Not artificial turf, no.
Would that, do you think that would decrease the cost if we didn't have to do water?
I think that would probably increase the cost.
Well, we wouldn't have to do the, the, the lines though.
Overall, it would decrease the cost some, but the cost of artificial turf is ridiculous right now.
I know, I know. I, we, I put in it, we put it in at the school that I used to work at. So I, I do know it's, even then it was very expensive. Um.
We'd like to get this done, but I just, I, I'm sorry, unfortunately.
Just for the record, I work at the library, so it's very counterintuitive for me to say something negative, but.
Should we put out for more bids?
I mean, I wonder if the question is for council is can we break it up into smaller pieces? And again, I, I don't know.
Isn't this like the building is one and the landscaping?
No, I'm talking about just the landscaping in general.
Because we did, we did that through H P R C too, so that we didn't have to have somebody with so many qualifications. Hopefully, it would be less expensive.
Unfortunately, we could, could divide this up, but which do you first do first? Do you do the lawn first or do you do the concrete first? Because if we don't do the lawn, then we're going to be tearing up the concrete within the irrigation system.
So I still think we should go away from the irrigation system. I mean, I, I, I think we should start looking at this all around town. Like wherever we can move grass into like big turf, we should be doing that just because it's gonna save.
There escaping.
There is, well, you can't because the historical property has to be long. Um, but I just don't, I mean, I just don't see why we're gonna water grass anymore. Like it's, to me, it's done deal. Like, I have big grass in the backyard, it looks beautiful.
This time we got one bid for.
I know, that's not your, I, dude, it's not your problem. It's just nobody wants to do it. Like, that's also the problem with it.
You know, uh, John, I want to thank you for the effort, put that out for bid, you know? We tried, we, we even tried another angle to try to, first, save money and, uh, you know, it came back far more expensive for even less work. Uh, my recommendation is, uh, to, uh, put this out for bid, uh, maybe, uh, let, and it's in the packet here, uh, maybe in the fall, uh, or in the spring and try again, but one bid. This far over what anybody would have expected. I, I just think it'd be a disservice to, to the citizens to pay this kind of money for less work.
Remind us again, Mayor, what was the original one?
Well, I, I want to say it was around three and it include, I'm sorry, what?
Three hundred and six.
Okay, three hundred and six and, and then included everything.
What happened to that person that bid on that?
They did not bid on the second one. They said, um, the Hans connected, contacted them. They said that they had too much work, that they weren't even gonna bid on it.
Probably that's why we really had one bid, because you can't find anybody to do it. My suggestion, maybe in the fall.
God, I hate this for the library though.
I know, I know. I'm, I'm with.
Carmen, can I recuse myself from this vote? Because I work there.
I don't think you have to. Uh, councillor Collier, you don't have any sort of personal, um, interest per se in the improvements to the property?
But I'm with everybody. We want to get this done, but it's just, you know.
Huh? You can? No, I'm not recusing myself.
John?
Well, the question, the terms going up, we're taking risks. Be important though.
Nah, I don't believe in people. I gotta say what I believe and I.
Yeah, but when you get one bid, it's hard to tell if that bid's even legitimate.
Right.
Did you all, did you all talk to the Hames about this?
No.
Yes, they were, they were here when we reviewed the bid.
What did they think about this bid? Can you share that?
Overweight.
What are they even doing? It's like, it's a lawn and some cement work. Let's get together. I think between this room full of people, we can probably do it.
Well, we should, I mean, how would we be hurt? Well, why do we cover? I mean, people never see it all or?
Yes, it goes on, uh, bid net direct, which is a, a website that also unfortunately I didn't get. Uh, before Mr. Marsh went to his class, he was going to send me, he sent it to a couple additional, uh, contractors, not on up, online, and didn't get any bids back from that also. So like I say, my opinion is if we're going to put something out to bid, let's get the building fixed before it deteriorates any further and then see what we can do about the landscaping.
I, I think one thing that, speaking just from knowing what goes on in the conversations amongst staff, if there's some way to beautify that corner inexpensively, you know how I feel about temporary stuff, I'm not for it, but some sort of way to make it look better temporarily. You know, I think that the, I, I can't speak for them, but I, I would feel better that at least it looks like we're trying to do something over there.
Well, this has been what, five years?
Been a long time.
I mean, they're like, you know, the patience of Job is being tried here.
Well, I mean, the turnover from it being library pa- property to, it's always been city property, but the library always took care of it before. Now the city is responsible. So that actually has not happened that long ago. So.
No, that hasn't happened.
Yeah. So really this has just been like three years, I guess, like that, something like that, guys?
No, the, the library, I believe it's only been maybe a year. We signed the agreement that the city won't do that.
Right.
The exterior.
So John, if we, uh, put repair of the building out for bid in the fall, maybe get it done in the spring?
Can we put both of them out for bid and see which one comes back most more economical?
We can always review this with the Hames and, and the state and decide is what we're putting in there really necessary. There's a lot of expensive concrete work in this bid.
Yeah.
I saw that. I, I would, I would like that because I, I really don't want to see this get kicked, the can kicked down into the next building season. I really don't.
Yeah.
No, I understand that.
I think that's a good idea that we have the, the state reevaluate. Like, does this really worth this much money for a little tiny town?
Can we talk to Chris Allen?
I don't have.
Well, like I said, I, I've talked to Chris Allen.
Yeah.
To Sam before about this too.
So. Would council be comfortable with trying to redid this in the fall? Both of them, the, uh, the construction aspect and the landscape aspect.
I don't want to wait, I would rather revisit it like over the, the rest of the summer, like fall, just the fall is certainly, is it September through November? I don't know. I just feel like we're pushing it down. I don't like that.
It just.
I think he's just waiting for it to like calm down.
Might be advantageous. Well, are we gonna look at the scope of the work? Didn't we talk about that?
I think we need to look at the scope of the work and see what's.
That's not gonna happen in a couple of weeks. That's gonna happen over ten.
Give us the way.
That will be a pretty large process to change the design. It could be done, but it, they have to approve it and we have to go through H P R C ourselves. And then the design has to be done. So there will be probably a fairly significant process associated with that.
Can we put this up for bid again with the, um, with the building as well and see what comes in? I feel like we have to move something forward. Like something, to me, something has to happen in twenty twenty-two to help move this project forward.
So you mean combine them again?
No, no, two separate bids. I, because I do think keeping the bids separate is a, a good call.
Just start taking bids now and, you know, get what you can, get as many as you can over the next few months.
Didn't they have to go through, anything we changed, go through the historical process again?
We just up their C, uh, their C O A again. And we up, we decided that they could separate out building from landscape so that maybe we didn't have to have somebody that had all the skills. We could have two somebodies with half the skills.
Right. So this just recently happened and we get.
This is last week.
A bid and it'll be a new ceiling.
Yeah, so we've already, we just, we just re-upped it.
Yeah, but they would have to come back with it.
Yeah.
So we, we, we just changed that and we get one bid for forty-four thousand more dollars.
Sure.
Oh, yes.
Just also like to state that, uh, any change would also have to go back through the state historic, uh, process as well. So that would take a little time and energy, um, but something that we can do, of course.
Right. So we had just recently changed it so that the bids could be separated from construction landscape.
So, yeah, that, uh, the process of breaking out the bids did not require review by the state. We double checked.
Okay.
Um, with our architects, they, you know, provided an email question to the state and they said that that didn't need, um, need to go back through their process. It did go back through H P R C, um, for a new C O A because the C O A had expired. I, it wasn't quite so much that we were breaking the bids out. That was more of an informational piece of it. But, um, it needed a new C O A just because of the timeframe of, uh, the prior approval.
Got you. So we had recently gone through this and, uh, we, we end up getting back a single bid that's forty-four thousand dollars more for substantially less work. And, uh, uh, I, I'm just wondering, uh, council direction, again, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, put it out for another bid in the fall. I don't know what, what more we can do at this point. I mean, I think that to approve this for this limited amount of work is, is extremely expensive. Jonathan?
Just to say, I'm not super optimistic about what I'm about to tell you, but I think that there is an opportunity that we could get a little bit of grant funding for this. And the only problem is, is that it's going to have to be really strategic about how we apply for other grants. There are some park grants that may be available for this project if we rethink about kind of how this space is used a little bit. And we might possibly be able to get a store grant for the building work potentially. Um, but both of those things, we need to research and see exactly what would be possible and how that fits with other city plans. But, um, if we had a little bit of time to do that and additionally to look at these designs and see if they might be, um, economized, we might be able to come up with a, a better project in theory.
So what is the, what does the usage have to be?
It would need to be a park, like a rail park. It kind of acts that way now, but we would probably need to look at it and talk, maybe memorial park would be a good idea for it.
Well, we have an opportunity there. Um, Buddy Mees has, uh, you guys knew who the, she owned the Sugar Plum. She gave a portion of her estate in the, uh, sum of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the library district. That being said, they asked, um, me in particular, because I used to go visit Buddy, what I thought would be appropriate. And I did say naming the park after her because she was so into gardening would have been a great idea. So it could be a very well, a memorial park with Buddy's name on it.
Well, that's good to know.
Pretty good sum of money to donate.
And she cared a lot about the library.
If we had put this out for bid again in the fall, you think that would give adequate time to look into this, Jonathan? Please so.
I don't think anybody wants to hold the library off anymore, but I think it's one of the better decisions or.
Yeah.
Because we got one bid that's overpriced, I think.
Yeah, it's atrocious.
Yeah.
John?
And we did just budget three hundred thousand for this project this year.
Yeah, and that's getting everything that you wanted done.
Yeah, so if we go out to bid again with the building and the, the grounds, then council will have to decide if they need to, where to take those additional funds from.
We have Jared's kind of question. Sure. Oh, sorry, Jared.
Uh, I was just going to state that in prior experience, it seems like a lot of landscape contractors get really busy over the summer. And so bids are not as competitive over the summer. Um, in my past.
Um, in my past role, we would always bid landscaping items either in November, December. Or January, February for the following year. Just because, uh, landscapers are oftentimes have a clean plate at that point in time.
Jared, thank you for that, uh, input. That's, uh, that's good. Again, I'm asking for, uh, council direction. Uh, I'm just, uh, thinking that with the expense that's in front of us right now. And, uh, also with, uh, Jonathan's, uh, and Jared's, uh, comment. Uh, a rebid in the fall might be the better direction.
I, I'll make a motion, Ben, Chuck, um, to have, uh, John Mordany put it out to. For a rebid on both the construction project and the landscape project to the library in the fall of twenty twenty-two.
You want to just table this?
Well. Well, I mean, uh, we, we could, but I'm just thinking that we could take formal action so that at least something does get done in twenty twenty-two.
Is that enough, Chuck?
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, and I would just ask for line item.
Oh, sorry, from line item, uh, twenty-one dash zero zero dash seventy forty-two.
All right, uh, thank you, Kate. And do I have a second?
Just a second.
And, uh, Art, uh, second, uh, any further discussion on this?
I'm going to put out bids. We're gonna put out a bid for both of them.
Well, and thank you for that clarification. Uh, anything further? A roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manocle.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Our Kakavale.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Yes. Uh, next item, something dear, dear to our hearts, the road situation. Uh, I would actually like to make this motion, uh, with option three. Move to approve nine hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-three cents to HDR Inc. For engineering services for Virginia Canyon, Virginia Street. And Virginia Street from Tenth Avenue to Virginia Canyon reconstruction from line twenty-three hundred dash zero zero. At fifty-one, zero, three.
I second that.
And thank you very much. We have a second. Uh, I'm sure there probably will be some discussion, uh, discussion, please.
After you get to thirty percent design, are you gonna, are we gonna be able to go for grants?
Yes, sir. We plan on applying for one from DOLA for water infrastructure in the street. Um, that will be this fall, the application this fall. And that's one of the kinds of projects to be funded very frequently. So we should have a pretty good shot to, to fund that work.
Yeah. So is there any grants for, uh, storm drainage?
Yeah, that would be that grant through the energy inter, the energy.
Water, sewer.
So we would be doing utility work in the street with that grant.
And, uh, John Mordany, I'm kind of wondering here, and I, you know, I, I don't have the, the. The account in front of me, but I want to say that, uh, we had about one point five, one point six million. In the street funds, this would exhaust, uh, nine hundred and, uh, eighteen thousand. So we might have about six hundred thousand-ish left.
And I would have to check with Andy and, uh, Lorraine that we do have to keep a minimum in there.
Gotcha.
For that. Um, I agree with the number three. Just so you know, that does not leave us very much left in that account.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? And of, of course, this is trying so that. We have some shovel-ready projects when grant money comes down the road. I, I think probably everybody understood that. All right, uh, with no further discussion, a roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Lisa Manocle.
Yes.
John Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Our Kakavale.
Yes.
Scott Penel.
Yes. All right, thank you. Um. And lastly, for our, uh, our regular, uh, council meeting, uh, we have something here under mayor and council. And it is, uh, a letter from resident regarding the wild bunch and the gunfights downtown. And it was in, uh, your packet. And I thought we would have a discussion, uh, especially after all of the, uh. The talk tonight about the, uh, the gun shows and, uh, how we, uh, how we feel about that.
So I have a, a few comments if you don't mind, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I appreciate you waiting, Kate. Yeah, thank you.
No worries. Um, number one is, I, I think that everybody has conferred that the historical element is absolutely. Um, highly desired, obviously very popular. I, I think having been in actual, um, active shooter training for a school, um, it's terrifying. It's terrifying. And I, I, to this day, I go to, sorry, I go to a store and I think about where I'm gonna go, what I'm gonna do if something happens. So for me personally, I don't like fireworks. I don't like guns. That's just me. I think that if we can put the, uh, Wild Bunch in a place, on a stage, at the ballpark. Where people are invited to go see it, they know what they're gonna come up against. I think Kristen was very eloquent when she said. Hey, if you're gonna go and you're gonna be a part of it, you're, uh, wonderful. This way, it's not in downtown. It's not startling somebody that just walked in, has not heard the, you know, the, the, the bullhorn. That it's gonna, it's coming, it's coming, has not seen a sign. And it is just too raw for me personally. To continue to have these conversations about certain freedoms where personal freedoms are. That I can walk down, down, uh, down, downtown and not freak out. That's another personal freedom. We should all have our personal freedoms met. I think the Wild Bunch could easily move to that side of town where they can do. Whatever they want in that ball field. And that's just my comment, so.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate that. Uh, uh, other discussion?
I'm okay with it, where it is. You know, I mean, it's a snack.
I'm not okay with the open gunfire. I agreed to do this with trepidation because it's a lot of the same concerns. I haven't done active shooter training. My kids have spent their entire career doing active shooter training. So when they hear things, they'll say, okay, mom, we can go here. And I think that is horrific. So I was approached over the Fourth of July weekend by both business owners and people that just know that I'm on council. And they were like, this is terrifying, like, you know? So I, I, I agree with Kate that we have a right to walk down the street and not have, you know, the daylight scared out of you. I would prefer to have them moved so that people can go. Because I also love histor- I've seen their show. I love historical reenactment. You know, I've done a lot of it. But I also feel like, given the way that our country is right now, the fact that we have at least seven mass shootings on the Fourth of July. People don't want to hear that. And I think if they do want to hear it, we have to move to a place where the people that don't want to hear it are not affected. Because people do have a right to walk down the street and not be affected by gunshots that they don't know. And my, I will continue to bang this drum. We are lucky that someone who has a concealed carry permit has not said, oh my God. What's going on? Whipped out their gun and started shooting live ammunition. We are lucky.
All right, any, uh, any further discussion?
Well, you know, I, I don't disagree with the, with the ladies. It's a very difficult situation. Um, we talk about freedoms. And, and the, the mass killings are awful. Um. We have mass killings every weekend in each block of Philadelphia, uh, Los Angeles, Seattle.
Colorado.
Um, all around the country, um, which are equal if not worse than, uh, what's occurred. Anybody dying is, is, is a bad situation. Especially children, but, um. I, I think this country's, uh, we, we can't stick our heads in the sand either. Uh, and lose, it's about freedoms, um, and lose our freedoms. And, uh, our historical, you know, we, we've lost over the last few years statues of our history that have been torn down. Uh, I think this is going in the same direction. It, it's a tough one.
The statues aren't gonna kill anybody.
More than the freedom to walk down the street and go shopping and not feel like I have to dive in a store. I mean, you know, the, the, the point was made that they're actors and I agree, they're actors.
Totally.
But how is that freedom more than my freedom to walk down the street with my kids and not worry about gunshots that I didn't know was happening?
You know, when, when I was a kid, we would see films of the atomic bomb and we had to go under the desk.
Yeah, we did that too, I remember.
It was extremely, I didn't interrupt you. It was extremely frightening. But if you live in fear, um, that's a dangerous place to go. As far as.
It's not living in fear, this is reality.
No, I live in fear. That's what it's about. It's true that something's gonna happen. I mean, that's what it is. We're all fearful that it's gonna happen. So let's stop going to grocery store. Let's forget about getting gas. Somebody might shoot us there. I mean, somewhere along the line, it's gonna happen. There's no two ways about it. It, because these people, my understanding, the mass shooters are mentally, um, disturbed, but, um.
So they're definitely white males. They're definitely white males.
I, I can't accept that. I just have to live with it or other people have to live with it because it's gonna happen.
The snipers that were on, uh, on the two ninety-five many years ago were not white males.
Oh, my gosh.
Twenty, twenty years ago?
What, what's the difference? What is the difference? It's history.
It is history. It's a, it's a very, very small fraction of the history, Art. It's a very small fraction of history.
Small fraction of history. What is?
Eighteen to thirty-five, white males. That is the category. That is the killer category.
So I'd like to say, you know, it's a very tough situation. I wasn't there for the reenactment, so I apologize, but. I don't know if there could be a designated area that was. You know, taped off, so it's very much more, you know, aware to everyone of what's going on. Instead of walking freely in the street. I don't know if that's how it took place, but. If you could do the reenactment in a designated area, is that?
We have roped off. We're right where the bank, the old bank is and the little park. We're about maybe twenty feet. In a, uh, deep and, and then across the street right there.
The signage was signage all over.
Signage, yeah. We have roped off and, uh.
The visual is not everything. The, the sound is the issue, not the visual. Like people, when they see people in cowboy costume shooting each other. Probably aren't as scared as just the hearing. The sound is the, the sound is the issue.
So yesterday I was, uh, in Gilpin County. And I, I watched the show and there was what I consider a very big difference. Because I don't think the Wild Bunch wants to scare the heck out of people or have them diving in stores. And we've had that happen here. Uh, yesterday, uh, it was a very confined area, maybe half a block. And folks actually came out of the buildings to watch the show because everybody was well aware of the show. It was no surprise. And here with our larger downtown, there is the element of surprise, obviously. Some folks are not getting the information that there are about to be gunshots. And maybe they're diving behind the slaymaker's tasting, uh, table. Or, uh, ducking into next store to escape what, what they think could be a life-threatening event. So I'm just saying for me, it was quite a contrast yesterday when I saw a very welcome show. With folks that were fully prepared and knew about it, uh, versus what, what obviously there are, are folks that. That are, are not getting the message. And I don't know if they're, you know, maybe just walking up or they're coming out of a store and didn't hear the message. But they're being alarmed because they're, they're, they're not, uh, they're not hearing that we're about ready to have a performance. And, uh, uh, what I'm hearing, at, at least from some council members is. That perhaps the show could go on with modifications and that might be a modification of where it's done at. Or how the communication is, but obviously people have to be a hundred percent aware. That, uh, there's about ready to be a performance. So that they're not surprised and feel like they're life in threat. Is, is that a fair statement?
There's a difference. I agree with you that there is a difference between you're just walking down the street and you don't know versus you go somewhere to see a while, but like to see it. There's a big difference in that and what you're aware of, what your expectations are.
I, I think it's gonna be difficult, um, to make all this mostly tourists aware. Who are, um, in their mindset somewhere else. I think it's hard to communicate to all these people. It's worth a try, but, um. It's just like an airport announcement comes out, people have, have, have to listen to it and they're, they're supposed to begin on that flight. So I think you can try it. Um, can't help but try it, but I don't know how successful that's gonna be.
Well, I was wondering about like Bruce's comment, they move it off the, the middle of downtown to the side of downtown. Because over where the train used to be, you're off a little bit farther. So it's not in the middle of the mainstream of people running around.
And advertise for people.
And advertise that they can come to it and see it.
Chief?
I, 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 I agree with what you're just saying. I cannot think that there's an opportunity to sit right out. I agree.
Right here.
Yeah.
How, how many nine-one-one active shooter calls have you received?
From these shows? Zero.
Thank you. Then, uh, would council be comfortable, uh, with myself and staff reaching out to the Wild Bunch? To see if we can't make some modifications so that.
Sure. I think a designated area would do wonders to curb anybody. And I, I guess the audience guys, I mean, you guys spoke out. So what do you think? A designated area? It sounded like that was something that you all conferred upon.
Yeah, downtown is not inappropriate.
It's not appropriate, yeah. I mean, I love performance. I don't think it's great, but it's, it's not appropriate downtown and, and. Realize you're talking to the people that are downtown all day, every day.
And you know, the bullhorn is hard to hear from one end.
What about in front of City Hall during these, I mean, you can cordon off this block for whatever time the show is.
I mean, you're still pretty close to downtown.
I know.
I, I'd have to give away from my store in any way.
Well, I just, I mean, I'm wondering about just putting alternatives out there, like several different alternatives, the train.
I, I got you. I think the chief's, uh, suggestion about back here may be the, the, the most, uh. Acceptable, uh, alternative. And if there is good advertising downtown. We're not letting the Wild Bunch folks down. There will actually be people that want to see their performance come to that area. And you'll only have people basically that, anybody that would go down there would be down there for that purpose.
I will say this one more thing, though. If. God forbid, somebody decides that now that they know that you guys are doing a show same time every Saturday. They can come out and while fun guns are going off, other people should, could be shooting people and with not fun guns. Because your show would disguise the fact that this war is happening down the block. So I'm just saying, the sound of gunfire in a public spot has never been acceptable to my knowledge. It's certainly not accept, acceptable any longer. And so we can contain it. But I'm just gonna say that this is still a possibility that somebody, some terrible, terrible person. So many other words that I would like to use, could do something and ruin your show forever. Because the association would be forever.
But now, with using these reenactor guns, the, the blank is about this big. Now, a revolver with a thirty-eight would be about this big. So we're talking two, three times the noise.
I'm not worried about your guns, though.
No, no, not the gun, the noise. Uh, you know, and the other alternative was using black powder, which is also a full load. Which is really noisy. I mean, we're not, our, our guns are a bunch quieter than, than an actual real one.
Well, if, uh, if council, uh, is amenable, then we will, uh, reach out. I like the idea of several alternatives. I think this one back here is probably the best.
Well, I wish that was back there.
Yes.
And, and if the gun shows as loud as everybody says they are, which they are. Does that not create a problem with people who are on the road that might get startled as well?
I'm not worried about them, but I am somebody downtown.
I mean, the parking lot's still right here, so there's hundreds of people parking there every hour.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion. If you give staff direction to work with the Wild Bunch, I'm pretty sure that we can develop an alternative. That we can bring pros and cons on to future.
Yeah, that, that's what we're looking for here.
And we can, and you can make a decision based on actual data instead of just.
Right, right. I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody questions, you know, that, th- these are good folks trying to put on a show. But maybe we can have it where people won't be surprised and where folks that want to, uh, see the show. Can group to see it and not, not be in, in fear for their lives or something like that. So, uh, I think, I think council would, would be amenable with that. Is, isn't that, that the case? That's, that's what we want. So, uh, please, uh, consider that direction.
Okay. And I could bring it to the next regular meeting, regular work session?
That would be great. Okay.
All right, uh, well, thank you. Anything further before we go into executive session? All right, then I want to thank everybody, uh, in the audience for coming. Your time is always very much appreciated. Uh, particularly those of you who wish to speak, uh, tonight, uh, you put your. Uh particularly those of you who wish to speak uh tonight. Uh you put yourself out there speaking in front of folks and I want to thank you. Uh for your comments, but uh we have to go into executive session now and uh and uh close it off to the public.
I have one question. We're scheduled for the twenty third. Should we just forget that and then?
Chuck, is that called tomorrow? If I can call you tomorrow with the topic, see if you get some time to be high.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let's talk.
Yeah, you have.
I'll contact you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief John, is there an event on the twenty third here in town?
I am not a hundred percent positive, but I will try.
I challenge you. Hey, Rick, through him in the council meeting.